I'd like to welcome everyone to the December 11th School Board meeting tonight. Will you join with me to say the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you. At this time, I would like to open the floor for public participation. If you would like to speak, come to the mic towards the back. State your name and address. If you're a student, you never have to state your address. We will move on. Tonight, we have budget questions and answers for Maintenance, Technology, and Student Services, and the District Wide. And after we hear those presentations and the Board has submitted questions, we will have public participation once again. So with that, I am going to welcome Tom Chisso up for Maintenance.
I'd like to start off thanking everyone for having me here to have the opportunity to talk about my budget. And hopefully, I can bring anything to light that you'd like to find out in the budget. I'm going to start off with there's a new form, at least it was for me, this year, the new Budget Request Form. I'm going to talk to three areas that were in that form itself. One, sidewalk repairs, $22,500. That's money to reseal and power wash the sidewalks. What this does for us in long term is it prolongs the length of the concrete sidewalks that we had a number of years ago with quite a few issues with them starting to deteriorate early. And at that point, they mentioned to us that this is something that we probably should be doing every two to three years. We got a little further away from that than we wanted to, just because stuff happened with COVID and stuff like that. But it's a good time, I think, to bring it back into our budget, and that's why you're going to see that this year, and you haven't seen that in the past. The second is door replacements. I have $15,000 in door replacements. I want you to think of door replacements, not of us like adding new doors and stuff. That's going into doors that have been repaired and cannot be repaired anymore. If you look at like a metal door, and especially with the salt and seasons we have, sometimes you see deteriorations out at the bottom, and eventually, they start to rust and rot, and we need to replace those. Sometimes on the wooden doors, you'll see different things. They start to delaminate a little, and some of the activities that go shorten the length of some of our wooden doors. And doors are very expensive. So what I felt it would be fair, if we brought this forward into the budget, kind of just telling everybody upfront, we do replace these things. Unfortunately, I have about three doors right now that I can think of that I'd like to replace, but we'll evaluate as they go on, and each year is different. So that's why you see that line item. The next line item you're seeing there is $75,000 worth of new cameras. And I believe, it was last year we started, Matt Chevanel, of course, wrote a grant, and we worked pretty around the district for our new cameras and stuff. But during that process, when we stopped and started thinking about cameras, and what we do every time we spend money, obviously, we have to think about what we're going to use it for, we found that we had to put a large portion of that into some of the infrastructure in the cameras, the servers and things that people don't see. So we didn't address as many issues as we wanted to, as far as the principles, because they're always looking at it a different point of view. I mean, we look at it at the point of view, sometimes you see it, and we're looking at it as, okay, this is the bathroom we need, this is another cafeteria area. But they look at it more definely, meaning they go, oh, this is an area that we have not constant, but we do have occasional problems here, and I really want to see that. And those are the new areas that we'd be exploring, and sometimes that's inside, sometimes that's outside. They might say, oh, we have a new structure outside in our playground. We want to make sure that's highlighted. I think, I'm getting a little off the subject of this, but even we evaluate some of our security, because Matt talked about last year. He goes, geez, really what we want to do is start looking at some of our courtyard's for overall security in case we had. So those are items that we review and look at. And the $75,000 that we have in would be bringing us up to what we think we need at this point.
Tom, do you mind if I just interject for a second? Yeah, that grant money, I don't know if you recall, but there was a story I told about it was due on a certain day. By 10:30 a.m., you had to, that's when they opened the window, and it was first come, first served. So I got everything I could, with the help of Tom, together to start pounding on that grant, because I didn't want anybody getting in front of me as far as being in line. So I kept hitting the button at 10, you know, 10:29, 10:30, you know, bam, and I finally got in. And so after we got the grant, we got the approval, and during the course of that, then we started taking a deep dive, and we realized a lot of our backend needed to be upgraded. So this is the continuation of that. But now, we at least have a solid foundation to build off of, which is exceedingly important. And we did add some new cameras in the grant, but we want to keep, but we didn't add as many as we would have liked to. Thanks, Tom.
And I'm open for questions, if you have more questions about my budget.
So the page two, account number 1262040842108, a board member asked to have an explanation for the increase of this line from 2324 to 2425, and then level funded for this year.
Are we, is, am I saying, is that the rubbish account that we're looking at?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
The rubbish trash account. Basically, what that line is, when I looked at it, it's basically been funded 2324 budgeted. The expenditure was different on the 2324, but the adopted that year was obviously the same. Adopted for 2425 was the same. So it is level funded in the fact of what we're going for adopted, certainly not as expended. And why, what we could see, the difference is, unfortunately, back a while ago, when we were back in the days of COVID, and we weren't picking up trash regularly, we tried to come up with a mechanism of how do we do consistently, or what fluctuations we can kind of work into our thinking. And what you see, if you look at this big variation right there, is from, unfortunately, they don't pick it up all the time. I'm trying to be nice and delicate about this.
Well, this is kind of considered, there's such a thing as a COVID hangover.
Yeah.
You know, you know when COVID stopped, you know when we came back to school, you know everything like that. But after COVID, the hangover was, there were no, there was, no one worked.
No one worked.
There was no people to work. We're still experiencing that with the Maintenance Department, with custodians. We're still experiencing that with special ed and parers. We don't, we can't fill positions, you know? And we've got probably 14 custodian positions that we still don't have. And conversely, those companies who are looking for CDL drivers who could pick trash up, they couldn't fill them either. So stuff kind of sat around for a while.
And every time they didn't pick it up, we didn't pay it, right? We only paid for what we got. So there's some buildup in there that if they would have picked up regularly on schedule all the time.
That would be the price.
We would be very close. A couple other things that factor in there, too. Sometimes we have fluorescent bulbs that we dispose of and stuff like that. We might have some large items that we have to dispose of with dumpsters and stuff. So that's all in there, too. That doesn't happen every year. But that's, that makes up the difference there, is what you're, I can tell you.
Lori.
I just wanted to speak in favor of the $75,000 for the cameras. I think the cameras are valuable for so many reasons in the school, and there are so many things that you can go back and find out, like if a crime happened, or bullying happened, or something's happening in the school, and you have a lot of different information. You go back to those cameras, and you can solve a lot of issues. And also, I think it, also, kids know they're on camera, so they're not going to throw an orange in the cafeteria to hit someone in the head, because they know that camera's going to catch them. And so I think that it's money well spent. It helps, it's a preventive measure, it's a safety measure. Two years ago, one of our School Board goals was safety, and we did a huge study. At some point in time, I'd like to know exactly how many cameras we have, how many cameras we really could use, and then the sophistication of the cameras, because I think the more sophistication, the better. Like, I know when I was in Nashua, they had cameras that could zoom in. So, you know, unfortunately, sometimes like in Nashua, there might be a drug deal in the hallway, and you could actually zoom in and see it happen, you know? And then you had that information. So I think, again, sophistication of the cameras is also important.
Let me add to that. I think that would be something we would want to probably cover in non-public for safety and security purposes, because we don't want to publicize what our procedures and equipment are for the safety of our students and staff. But we could do that in a non-public, yeah. Okay, the next question is page two, and this is, that line item is that whole page. And this is, could you give an overview of these expenditures and the need for the requested 164K increase? Sorry, page three. Yes, it's page three.
Okay. Page three in that particular line is kind of a line item that we use, it's kind of like a catch-all of different items that isn't consistently in the budget, and some are consistently in the budget. I will give you a little overlay of the, basically, 165 increase is items that weren't there last year. What lies in that one account would be the 225 that you see for sidewalk repair.
Yeah.
You'd also see a $15,000 in there for the door repair. You see $75,000 for camera repairs. There's also in that $11,000 for an access system for District Wide, one for an SAU building. And then, excuse me, the $11,000 is for special service, Student Service Building, I'm showing my age, Student Service Building. The $25,422 would be access for the Special Ed Building. There's $15,000 that's not normally in there, is to replace some of the ceiling grids in some of the schools that are rusted and stuff like that, just need to be in overall updated. I have three areas I kind of really focused on. There's a couple of art rooms at the high school, the entryway at Reed's Ferry, if you look up, the grid system itself, it really is rusted and kind of deteriorating and stuff that needs to be taken care of.
As far as the door, as far as the door access system at Special Services and the SAU office, you know, right now, everybody's aware that you can just walk into the building, and there you are, right? There is a second door, we'd have to do something with the Special Services entrance also. But, you know, if there were an SAU office that were to pass, that was on a warrant article, we could port those funds over and utilize them in that area, as opposed to putting them into buildings within a year that would be repurposed for another, you know, purpose, such as perhaps a parking lot, or a parent pickup and drop-off area during the 2 o'clock rush hour, you know, when the high school lets out. So we would repurpose those funds, but they're in there for now, because there is a need.
So is it fair to say that some of the expenses that are contributing to that increase are not year-over-year-over-year expenses, like you said?
That's correct.
They're not usually in that budget? Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the Board? Okay, do you want me to go to the next question?
Well, this is about, I'm going to.
Oh, that one?
About that one.
Okay. I did, I thought I put them all in there. All right, and the next question is page seven. And this is 845108, why it went down.
It went down, maybe Matt could speak a little bit about this, but it went down because of a warrant article that was carried?
Years ago, we used to have the roof program in the operating budget. And then, the Board at the time decided to take it out of the operating budget and put it in a warrant article to decrease the operating budget and give people a choice whether or not to put a roof on a building. The danger in that is if it's a warrant article and it gets voted no, then no means no, and you can't do anything with the roof, even though it's leaking like a sieve. However, when we have a warrant article, and the people have been really good about passing those roof warrant articles, so we kind of have a confidence factor that if we put one on there, that it is going to indeed pass. And so when we put one on there and it does pass, I put it in this account number. So that reduction represents the $797,000 that was in there in '24, '25, for the JMU's MES roof that passed. So that's why the dip. So if you do another roof, you'll see that increase, because that's where that line item sits. I don't have a separate line item for articles. They go into the budget under the proper function code. So when I do the DOE 25, which is now 55 pages long, it fits in the right bucket.
Any other questions from the Board? All right, well, thank you, Tom. We appreciate you coming and answering our questions.
Oh, sorry, I had some.
You did.
I was curious about the electricity budgets. And let me see, where did I have this written down? I just noticed, I was, partly I was curious, I looked in all of our graphs you gave us about market trends, and there wasn't a utilities one, which I actually went and looked to make sure, because I'm wondering if part of the answer to my question is costs are going up. But I was just curious how you calculate, when you're putting in the budget, what you're going to pay for utilities every year, like how that number gets arrived at.
See, the one thing we did is, we did a multi-year contract, like a five-year contract. We bid out NG, we bid out electricity, and I got a guy that I've been dealing with for 20 years now, who's awesome. And he did a sheet, like, over the last five, six years, that we probably saved over a million dollars in expenditures for utilities because of bidding them out, as opposed to going with what the local utility does for us. The only thing we can't, and that contract is up until 2028, so we're paying a set rate for all that, that's not going to increase until like 2028. So that was a pretty good deal that we got. But the only thing we can't control is what the PUC does in Concord, the Public Utilities Commission, that I believe is an elected or appointed body that regulates the distribution charge. So let's say you're on vacation, right? Everything is shut down in your house. You're not using electricity, you're not using heat, you're not using anything. On your bill, you are still going to get a distribution charge, even though the truck that brings the electricity to your house, I'm being a little facetious now, didn't run. Even though you didn't get any electricity, you're still going to get a distribution charge, because it contains the ongoing costs to maintain the lines and the distribution network, even though you're not using it. It's for everything, because it passes by your house to the next house. So that's something we can't control. That's set by the PUC. So that's why, when you're looking at it, okay, in '23, '24, the rates were a little bit down, and then, you know, going forward, we're not sure where that's going to land.
So another tool that we use to come up with the number is, we normally come up with a number of what we figure that percentage of the overall increase might be from delivery charge. And this year, we use 5% over the existing, what we thought it was. And the way we come up with the per-school look is, we take the highest expenditure in the last three years. Because sometimes, each school is a little bit different from year-to-year population. So we look at the highest expenditure in the last three years, and we added 5%, and that keeps us pretty close.
Thank you. Lori.
I just, would not be the same if we just didn't thank you for the quality of our schools. And I never, when I was a teacher and a coach, when I went to other high schools, and I saw how they were not well-maintained, and how they were not always clean. And then, you look at Merrimack Schools, and a lot of our buildings, including the original high school, you know, JMU's, they're old, they're very old buildings. They were built, I don't, like, in the 50s, right?
Right.
And so when you go in those schools, and you see how well-maintained they are, and how upbeat they are, and how clean they are, that goes back to the Maintenance Department. So really appreciative of how we take care of our schools. I really appreciate the Capital Improvement Plan. I am, you know, I'm excited that we have a vision for our future, and then we keep our schools in good shape. So thank you.
I was, actually, I'm glad you said that, Lori, because I was meaning to say the same thing, because I know, I have friends who live in other school districts, and I know they're having issues with buildings right now, where they're having to close schools or move schools, because they've deferred their maintenance for so long. And the fact that we don't defer our maintenance here is a huge asset. We're saving ourselves money by dealing with these issues proactively instead of reactively.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
I'd also like to say that I have lived all over this country, and that distribution charge is a unique-to-New England thing.
Is it really?
Yes.
We're so used to it here.
Yes. In other places, the rate is part of the rate. What you use, they already calculate into their infrastructure and everything, and what they charge. So you pay what you use. That was a wake-up call when we moved here. Okay, we will move on with Jason Pelletier to Technology and Library.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for having me today. In this year's budget that we're presenting, this marks the year two of our Capital Improvement Plan. So that's the biggest number in our budget. And that Capital Improvement Plan consists of computers, laptop replacements, server replacements. It also has the numbers for our Chromebook One-to-One initiative in there. There's projectors and interactive panels that are part of that, classroom peripherals like webcams and other things that they use in the classroom, iPads that we have. Normally, in the CIP, it also could have a storage area network in there. We don't have one. That's like a six-figure number. We don't have that this year coming up, which is great, we have those replaced. Network switches, that's the infrastructure stuff in the background that, when you're typing away and you go out to the internet, that switch does a lot of the magic to help you get out to the internet. Also routers, another infrastructure piece of equipment. Firewalls, we do have one of those in this year's budget, too, and that's a large, that's a large figure as well. Our voice-over-IP system, so the voice, the phones and phone replacements in there, and then also the battery backups, in case we lose power or anything like that, they'll help keep the systems up as long as possible in order for, so we don't lose our systems if we have blips in power and whatnot. Where, the nice thing is, even though it's still only the second year of that Capital Improvement Program, Plan, we're already seeing our trajectory from the six-year plan starting to go down. And a lot of that's due to being able to streamline things. So once, when we made the plan, it's like, this is what we have, right? This is everything that we have. And now that we know what we have, we can be strategic on what, on what we do and how we do it. So there's, there's a lot to be said of, you know, being smart and efficient with the way that we do, we engineer the background for the network and everything like that. So we engineer it to be very simple, but also very secure. So removing some things that aren't necessary, that's going to help decrease, a lot of big-ticket items, and also using the technology that we have to its fullest. So for instance, for example, like a firewall has a lot of like ports and everything on it, but it also does like URL filtering, which is like web filtering, it does the protection side of things and all that stuff. So we utilize those firewalls to their maximum capacity. We can eliminate a little bit of server usage, we can eliminate some other network switches, and we use that to our fullest capacity. We also, they can be used as routers, and our switches can be used as routers, so you'll see the need for traditional routing starting to go away. So that really helps when we look at that budget overall. So if we're shaving off $30,000 here, $50,000 there, it makes a big, a big impact over those six years. The other thing that's important, too, is it is a six-year plan, but that plan is designed to be, to just keep on going, right? And what we, it's technology. So what we plan today, you know, in a month, that can change. In six months, that's definitely going to change. In a year, that'll change. So, but we are definitely seeing the need for, for some of the stuff that was in that original first-year plan, we're starting to go away from that. And then also, we have wonderful educators in District, they're all there, and we have technology in the classroom, and it's reliable, and they're using it. So what that helps us do, too, is kind of streamline the way that they use, they use devices. So in some buildings, they might, they might have had desktops and laptops, but now they're getting more and more comfortable, so some, in some areas, they don't want those desktops, they just want to use that laptop that they carry with them to and fro. So that helps, too. And with that one-to-one technology as well, some of the computer labs, they're finding, they haven't been using them. So the buildings have been able to strategize and use those computer labs for other needs that better suit the school, considering that a lot of technology is happening in the classroom. The other thing that you'll notice in our budget is that we split out library. So it's always been traditionally tech in library, and I know Matt has, definitely has a lot more on the history, but before I got here, it was, tech and library was always together. And I know there's a new statute from the state, right, that they wanted to break everything out by building.
Yeah, right.
And, and so, so that's what we did. We brought, we broke it all out by building for the libraries, we kind of culled out what they did, what they used historically. So, so for instance, there's $38,500 for books, and then there's periodicals, and then there's instructional media. That's very easy, right? That's like, that's library, that's library. But one of the harder things was the supplies line, right? Because we kind of mashed everything together. So we took a very, very careful look at what the libraries used and what we used on the tech side, and we tried to be as, as even and fair based on population at the buildings and everything like that. So what we end up having is, for, for the high school, they get the biggest chunk of that, $1,400 for the supplies. Now you'll see that in their budget. Middle school, $1,200 for their supplies. And this is to run the library program, right? So, so this is where they'll, the book bindings and all these other types of things that they need for, for running the library program, not necessarily running the library class, right? It's like, they're more their backend, their own private stuff that, that they need the funding for, to just keep those books, the circulation going and whatnot. MUSE, very similar population to MMS, we have $1,200. Muse, very similar population to MMS, we have twelve hundred. And then what we did is we decided that each elementary school, it just made sense to give each one the same amount of money, even though the, the populations kind of differ. But it kind of just made sense to us because the program still needs what they need at, at the, at that level. So MES, RFS and TFS, you'll see eleven hundred dollars for them in their respective, in their respective budgets for, for that. The, the other thing that, that you'll definitely notice is the, the pro, the software and licensing line. So the nature that we're seeing is roughly around nine percent increase on a lot of our, on average for our renewals. And that's substantial. And a couple of reasons for that that we're finding is, one, to hire people, it's so much harder and it's so much more expensive for these companies. So we are seeing the, the brunt of that increase. Also wrapping a lot more security around the software, cause there's lots of data breaches. And the more data that they have, the more they have to safeguard it, the more we're asking them to safeguard it. That costs more money too. So we're seeing a lot more rise in that. And then the infamous AI integration into everything. So it's this next, you know, value add, we have AI now that's gonna go, go up in there too. So those are just some of the factors, but that's one of the, one of the basic reasons why that is going up substantially. I know last time we spoke, we talked about our Microsoft licensing and how that was like astronomical. So that was over eighty thousand dollars. And we took a good, careful look at that and we were able to get that down into the sixties for this year. And we hope to keep on bringing that down as much as possible. One of the factors that's still keeping that way up there is still the need for desktop version of Microsoft Office. And in order to get that desktop version, cause they, they're still pushing that cloud. If we did the cloud versions of, of that, then that cost can go down, but it's just not feature-rich. There, the web versions of Office are not, don't really have that robustness that, that our teachers are looking for. Our office admin, our business side of things.
Don't do that to me, Jason, please.
I would not do that.
I'm getting shaky just listening to you.
No, so, so that's really the, the problem there with, with that cost. But as more and more people get more comfortable with the Google tools that we have, and hopefully we could find some other ways to lower that, we're, we're gonna take a look at that. But we know for a fact that Office is gonna be around forever, especially again, admin offices, the business side, DO, things like that. There, there's no, there's no way getting around that, right? The other thing that I, I had a question about was in our instructional equipment line. Last year, we bumped that up dramatically from like twelve thousand five hundred, I think, up to thirty-one thousand. And we did that again, we level funded that. And one of the main reasons, again, if you look historically, is we, we had pockets, pockets of money for contracted services for like intercom systems and replacing speakers for those things and some other media in, in like the gyms and whatnot. We kind of picked and pulled from there, cause there wasn't like a real location for that. So what we said, we're like, we're gonna try to be as transparent as possible. We're gonna put those services in this line and that bumped that way up to thirty-one thousand. And right now, we're seeing that that seems still very appropriate amount to continue our maintenance and preventative maintenance of those, those equipments in there as well. And other than that, if you guys have any other questions or anything, I'm happy to answer those.
So you covered a lot of the questions that, that we submitted. Is there, Lori?
I, I just wanted to say that I really do appreciate the antivirus and backup software. Again, a, a school district close to us did not have adequate and they were attacked and they lost a lot of data. And it was a real disaster for that school district. They won't get that information back. So to stay ahead of the game is a hard job, especially today. So, you know, I just want people to know that, that is, you know, a critical part of this budget. And then finally to also say, which I say every year is, Jason, I worked with him in a previous district and when he came to this district, I got a lot of hate mail like, that I must have recruited him. And I do appreciate that you're here.
So do we, yeah.
Very happy to be here. Thank you.
Lori, may I just say, one of the, one of the value-added aspects to Jason and his, in his role is that we have a leadership team every two weeks. And he will routinely devote about fifteen to thirty minutes, sometimes more, to a tech tip, which will help everyone work smarter and more efficiently. And so those have been very, very beneficial.
Thanks, Bill.
Ken.
And I mentioned this at the last presentation when our elementary school folks were here. I, I think the switch of moving the library funds makes a lot of sense. Because our librarians now have a little bit more say and control over how they spend their budget. And, you know, and I believe they were even, they had, they were able to provide like input into the, the amounts as well. So it wasn't just a decision made at the upper level. The librarians were involved with that. And as you pointed out, our librarians serve multiple roles, not just maintaining the libraries themselves, but they also plan lessons and execute curriculum as well. So I, I think what, what is represented here for the librarians is very fair and, and I think I support that move. I think it makes a lot of sense.
Thank you.
We'll go right down the line. I'm the person who asked the, the question about why, why did technology and library services end up together in the first place?
Okay, you, you want me, I'm gonna take this one.
Yeah, yeah, I wanna know.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Well, when I was in Jeffrey Ringe in ninety-eight, ninety-nine and ninety-nine, two thousand, we had such a thing called, and Bill remembers this from his days in Westford, called Net Day Two Thousand, where you had a crew of volunteers come into your building and string cable all over the place with no rhyme nor reason and you were supposed to make a network out of it. Well, I got through that in Jeffrey Ringe and we built them a network. Now I'm coming to Merrimack and I'm going, okay, this is Merrimack, New Hampshire. You got BAE Systems, you got High Tech, you had TI, you had all these companies. It's gotta have a robust network, right? I get here, there's nothing here. I asked the former superintendent Jim, I hope you're watching from Maine and you're still doing good. What's the network? Well, we have a couple of fifty-six K lines going into the schools. I said, okay. So then there was a warrant article that was put forward for four hundred fifty-six thousand to build us a network. And so it passed. And then everybody looked at me and I'm going, I gotta do this again? Seriously? And so we, I got, we got a group of people, this is way before Jason was here. And Pam Tinker, who was the director of Library Media Services, was somewhat technologically savvy. And so she was an asset. We had computer teachers that were assets. We had Mark Maryfield, who was still with us in a very part-time, limited capacity, who was an asset. So we pulled together those people and we actually built it. Then there was the issue of who's gonna manage it now? Well, we didn't quite have an answer for that. I know where I came from, we hired a network person. But in this, in this district here, there was more of a leaning towards keeping it in the library kind of end with the rest of us kind of picking up the slack. So if a server went down at J Muse, I'd go over there, I'd go in the closet, I had my special key, I'd unplug all the servers. Yeah, I did that, Jason. I unplugged all the servers, wait around a minute or so and then plug everything back in and hope everything came back up. And so it was kind of like one of those, those types of battles where we put the hardware in, we got the desktop done, did, done. We had to wire Thornton Sberry and Reed Sberry, cause there was no cabling in any of the buildings here. And this was two thousand one, two thousand two, two thousand two, two thousand three. We don't have a dedicated network administrator. We're running by the seat of our pants. It's like, oh my gosh. And then we bring in a student information system. That was called Power School. That's when it all started. Now teachers are looking at us like, oh my gosh, they're taking away my paper gradebooks. And the, the, the pushback on that, I, I hid for a year, to be honest with you, you know? Cause I was in charge of the committee that actually birthed the student information system here and the electronic gradebook. So I, I hid, cause no one liked me. But over the course of time, it became more and more obvious that we needed a dedicated, I was pleading, we needed a dedicated technology director. High-level, knows what he's doing, on top of everything, person. And that person was Jason. So when we hired him, we knew that we were gonna transition out from the model we were in, cause it wasn't sustainable, to having him dedicate himself to technology with our, our network administrator Brendan, who you don't see here at all, because he's always in that little closet looking for, you know, I don't know, Russian intrusions or whatever he does, you know? He's one of those paranoid guys that just knows everything. So we just let him be and he watches our back. But it was a long road before we finally got here. It took a lot longer than I ever thought it would. But we're finally here. The COVID thing helped. The ESSER money, where we just invested heavily in technology helped. And it became, with those big investments, it became readily apparent that we absolutely needed a dedicated network administrator for this, or tech, technology director for this, for this whole effort. We went to one-to-one. We never had that before. I think we had ten-to-one when we first started, twenty-to-one. It was one computer in a classroom, that was it. And then you had computer labs. And, and now it's kind of like, you know, everything is online, everything is access online. Kids use them all the time. You know, they become, they're like the pen and pencil, you know? Although I'm still glad we're using pens and pencil, cause that's important too. You know, there's a lot of studies, educational studies that Amy is much more, you know, competent on than, than I am. That when, you know, you have the mere function of putting a pen on a piece of paper, it does something as far as learning and everything like that. Me, all I do right now is just sign my name, you know, that's about it. But that was kind of the long-winded story about how this all happened and how it split and the reason why it split. And kind of the reason why it took a while. It was a cultural thing for everybody, cause they were used to the way it was. And the technology was ahead of the labor structure needed to advance the technology. So.
I was curious too if there's, like you said, it was been a process. Are there more steps to the process yet to come? Is there more things gonna move around? Is anything else gonna be, is it gonna be renamed? Is it gonna stay technology and library, that one-line item? Just, I'm just curious. It's not.
I don't know, we'll, we'll, we'll see. You know, you know, technology is one of those things where, you know, you, you go, you move out of the field for a month, you're behind. I mean, it changes so rapidly. So I can't say, you know, nothing's going to change into the future. But everything changes every, every single, every single week, every single day, every single, you know, month and year. I mean, I couldn't imagine talking about artificial intelligence and ChatGPT and all this other stuff, which quite frankly, you know, I'm not really up on at this point in time. I know how to unplug servers and create havoc and get the network running, but I don't do that anymore anyway. But yeah, I, I think we'll evolve as technology evolves. But you know, maybe you could talk to something that you see as a emerging technology or method of, of being that will help us into the future. I don't know.
Yeah, and I think that, you know, AI is, it's kind of one of those things that's here to stay and it's harder to find for a lot of people. And there's a lot of different types of AI, you know, when you, when you talk about it. But I feel that it's here to stay and it's a tool, right? So just like the internet was like this big scary thing and it's like, that's fine, like this is great. Chrome, you know, one-to-one device is kind of a scary thing, but we, we saw like the power that that is to put a device in a kid's hand and be able to create content and show their learning. AI is gonna be one of those tools that when the students that we have right now, when they get in that workforce, that's gonna either give them the heads up or that's gonna level that playing field for them. So it's something that we really need to look at and, and leverage, because it's, it's in everything. They're already using it and it's kind of just like the internet. How do you use it appropriately? How can you leverage it to get the most out of it? What's safe, what's not safe? How can you use it to, to make your own content better, right? Not use it to just regurgitate, not learn, but how can you use that to make, make your content just go the next level up, right? How can you use it to write better papers? How can you use it to be more persuasive? How can you use it to check your stuff? Am I plagiarizing? Am I not plagiarizing? And have it go through and use those tools? Be like, um, I didn't really paraphrase that very well. Let me try it again, right? So I think that's one of those things that we need to really look into and that's, that's one of the next steps. And technology is always changing every day. So we're gonna always try to make sure that we're, we're able to shift and move in whatever way that it, it goes and not have like this big drastic, uh-oh, we weren't prepared for this.
Well, as usual, technology far advances curriculum, but it, I do think that there is a curriculum coming to help teachers teach how to use AI well. Because I already see good ways to use it, even ChatGPT. But also as a teacher, I can, I can find ChatGPT's plagiarism like that with my students. And so, you know, again, teaching them how it can be harnessed for good. And maybe a good example is, I don't understand the prompt and I'm at home and my paper's due on Monday and my teacher's not gonna answer my email in the weekend and, and I'm overthinking this question and I'm gonna throw this question in to AI to see if I understand what, what it's asking. You know, that, that is an appropriate tool. But as you said, plagiarism is not. So I, I do think that, you know, there's space there for a curriculum so that we can harness that and teach our students that well. Not just from organically, which our teachers already do, but also a structured way of doing that.
I agree, yes.
Also training for teachers on how to use it, because I had a thing come up this week. And I'm like a hundred fifty years old, so then I don't think I know anything about AI. But a teacher said, I'm teaching about emotional vocabulary and a teacher said, you know, it would be helpful if we had pictures with these words and definitions. And I was like, oh yeah, we would. And then I was like, and I was, then I was gonna scour the internet. And then I realized that I could go into Canva and say, generate a picture of this. And then I had, next thing I know, I had fifty cards with pictures. And I was like, look at me! But that is, that, you're just saying how it can help you in your job. And it did. It, it literally took me no time at all to get some cards that would be appropriate for students who need the visual of the word and it, and then for vocabulary. So it was really cool to see how that could be, it absolutely illustrates exactly what you just said.
Yeah, exactly. And, and it's great for a lot of students that might need that little extra help. Like, how do I structure this? Like, I just need to get started, right? And it's wonderful for being able to, to do things like that. So, so I agree with, with everything you're saying.
Other questions and comments from the board?
I also, I'm, I'm glad to hear that, you know, our, our capital improvement might be adjusting and, and that's a good thing. But I also want to thank the voters in Merrimack, who when you first presented that six-year plan and we looked at the price tag of it and went, ugh! The voters supported it. And, and I appreciate the town coming behind, recognizing how, especially out of, after we came out of twenty-twenty, how critical this was.
Yeah, thank you.
So thank you so much for coming.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Have a good evening.
Okay, I want to invite Sarah Reinhardt to come up for Student Services. Is your mic on? Nope, now it is. So, thank you. Before we get started, I know there's some questions about the budget. I just wanted to give a little bit of context. This has been now being my first year, so I have a, a little more information to add to what we see in the budget tonight. So the budget tonight reflects the cost of providing that legally required free and appropriate public education, FAP, to students with, who are identified in need of special education. And I wanted to take a quick minute just to clarify FAP, because for those of us who've been doing this for a while, it started out as just the minimum, the de minimis. What we most, what the minimum we had to do to help students. And in two thousand and seventeen, that was clarified for us by the Supreme Court in the Andrew F. decision. And in that decision, they said a FAP is considered sufficient when it enables a student with a disability to make appropriate progress in light of his or her circumstances. Which changed, I think, for school boards and for budget committees, some of the services and some of the lines we started seeing in our budgets. And then we see things like BCBA is coming in, right? Because we're recognizing those are appropriate for the provision of FAP. In Merrimack right now, we have approximately seven hundred and seventy-five students identified in need of special education. This means it's about twenty percent of our student population. It varies depending upon the time of year. This means it's about twenty percent of our student population. It varies depending upon the time of year. Consider though that that puts us right comparable to Nashua that has about twenty percent of their students identified in need of special education. A little more than Hudson, that's at about fifteen point six percent. But less than Sanborn, that's at twenty-four percent. So there does seem to be a variety and really dependent upon what your community is experiencing. A couple of things that are noted or notable with this budget. One is the cost of contracted services. So Merrimack, like many districts prior to COVID, had decided to utilize contracted services. For the majority of their related service provision. Speech, OT, PT, BCBA's. And there was a time and none of us could have anticipated COVID when that was considered a very wise decision. It allowed us to adjust contracts based upon student needs. So if we had a high number of students needing PT one year. We could adjust that contract. If we had a low number, we could modify. It was a very fiscally sound, sound decision to make. Then COVID hit. Which none of us could have anticipated. And then what happened is with COVID came a drain in professional staff. So suddenly there are no speech pathologists, there are no PTs. There are no OTs and companies that used to before COVID, call me once a week, hey, do you need any of this? Look what we've got for you. We can negotiate our rate. Are now like, we have nobody and our rates are non-negotiable. Because they recognize that districts all across the state. Need these services because there is nobody to fill these positions. Plus, what I do hear from my colleagues who have shifted from. Public school to working for these private agencies is the feeling is that public schools are hard to work for right now. It's a hard place to be and since COVID, that has been the feeling. Which is why when we look at our budget, we see a high amount of contracted services. They're required for FAP. We can't not provide them and yet we really. Have a very limited ability to find employees to fill them. If you'll notice, we did as a. SCU team talk about, let's start with our school psychologists. Right? And see if we can actually bring some school psychologists in as employees. And so there is a request for two full-time FTEs. Right now we have five point seven FTEs. To cover our six schools, our students in charter schools and our students in out of district placements. So that would about cover it with two to leave three that we'd have to contract out. The money's in the contracted services line. If we're able to find someone, that's going to be a different question. Also, you'll notice that there is a request for three administrative assistants. I am going to let Amy talk about one that's specifically unique to um, five oh four. But there are two in here that are unique to special education and here is why. Special education coordinators work on a teacher contract. Plus a certain amount of days over the summer. I believe it's ten or twenty extra days, right? Throughout the school year. Which means that if you are at J Mews, you have a hundred and seventeen students right now. That is a minimum of a hundred and seventeen meetings. Plus, you're going to have referrals, you're going to have eligibility meetings, you might have progress meetings. So we're looking at probably reasonably. A hundred and fifty to a hundred and seventy-five meetings. Her admin assistant is split between J Mews and Reed's Ferry. Reed's Ferry has a hundred and twenty-one students in it. So that admin assistant is responsible for monitoring the paperwork. Scheduling nearly three hundred meetings. And they are overwhelmed. And they are struggling to help our coordinators make compliance. Our middle school. Um, administrative assistant, who by the way, I want to say these administrative assistants are amazing. I, I just want to throw that out there. Please let nobody think that they aren't absolutely the bedrock of what we do. When it comes to our administrative and compliance work. Our administrative assistant works only the school year. But I do know that she emails me over the summer because she's checking her email, checking in. There are ninety-two kids. At the middle school right now currently receiving special education services. So again, we're looking at about a hundred and twenty meetings, more if we're going to schedule transition meetings. She also then does the coordination for the preschool. Which means she then goes to three other schools. To schedule meetings, to file paperwork, to follow up. On paperwork that's been sent out, documents that may or may not have been returned. And help the coordinators stay who split between also multiple schools. So we've asked for these positions in recognition of the fact that there's a lot of work. And a lot of compliance that needs to be done. And we really need to give the administrative assistants the supports. That they need so they can help support the coordinators. And I don't know if you want to talk about the third one?
Yeah, I can talk a little bit about the third admin assistant is specifically for five oh four. So it's a similar story. You had asked, one of the questions was about our number of five oh fours and right now we have four hundred seventy-eight. Um, spanning our six buildings, thirty-six at MES, uh, twenty-eight at Reed's Ferry. Forty-eight at Thornton's, seventy-seven at Muse, seventy-six at the middle school and two hundred thirteen at the high school. And although there aren't as many as. Paperwork, follow-up as there is in special education, a five oh four is a can, a can, a legal responsibility. And right now we have. Let's see, ten different people case managing five oh fours. They're doing all of their own paperwork. They're doing all of their own scheduling and. We can, we have to do a better job. We are missing pieces. Um, there are times where. We're not in compliance where we could or should be. Um, and we're thinking that in an administrative assistant just assigned to five oh four. Similarly, as to what Sarah's talking about, could help us really develop um, a tight system, which is what we think our students and families deserve.
And one of the other things you'll notice towards a point with the contracted service providers is when you have so many, it feels a little hard to wrap your hands around. Who's doing what? What are the contracts? What's company is providing which? So we've worked to streamline this year to say, we're going to get our school psychologists from one agency, which is going to allow us to better monitor. What's being done, the costs that we're spending and we've, so you see them move a little bit in the lines. Because now instead of taking them from Boothby, we've moved to White Birch. And so Mr. Chev and I and Ms. Olson have tried to kind of go, okay, let's create some systems. Because also, these agencies are calling us saying, hey, just so you know. Um, our school psychologist got injured and I'm sorry, we have no one to finish your evaluations. And we're like, okay, so now we need to call from another agency. So having that system is just making it more efficient. So we're not constantly dipping in different kinds of agencies to monitor our contracted services.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you, you've sort of answered. But I'm going to go straight through them.
Okay.
Um, just to make it clear. Um, the first one is on page one, it's the SEL contracted services. Please explain these budget expenditures. Who are the contractors? What do they do? Explain why there was an increase last year into this year that's level funded for next and how many students are receiving those contracted services?
Okay. So this program used to fall, or this line used to be under the director of wellness, right? So Sarah Prado does oversee these lines. So it's level funded because this line contains the YES program, which we talked about last year. Supports at-risk students and right now they support at, at-risk students at the high school only. They used to be across the district, but we consolidated them. Um, and historically, we see, what we understand is that they see about twenty kids at any given point and that is because. Students move into the YES program as they need those additional supports. Then they move out. Other students may move in. So roughly they can support about twenty. At any given time. Um, there is, there continues to be the Greater Nashua Mental Health Groups who provide self-regulation programming and training at the K eight level. There is adventure lore. Which provides experiential learning for at-risk students. We have adjusted different items in this line, taken some things out to keep it level funded. But also to add some different experiences and to shift adventure lore also to incorporate students at the middle school who are at-risk learners. There is tier one interventions. This would be new, but again, we reduce something to add something else. For guest speakers for students to really give students those anti-bullying experiences. Um, and so on. This is about two thousand dollars per school. But again, it's focused so students can start having these experience, not just us as parents and adults. There is also um. A suicide prevention training for staff. So it's a train the trainers, much like we do with CPI. We train the trainers so the trainers can train them, the district staff. This is a one-time fee of twelve thousand dollars. And then there continues to be a part-time contracted counselor at J Muse and MMS. To provide counseling as outlined in students' IP's. Amy, is there anything you wanted to add to that?
No, I guess I would just say, um, the suicide prevention training, you know, is a, is an, we have to do that once a year. Um, we have tried to do a combination of um, asynchronous training through vector. Uh, we've also brought in a speaker from UNH. Um, what we're really finding from the feedback that we get from staff is that they want to have an in-person option. For this very sensitive training. And when I've talked to Sarah about that, NAMI is really. You know, the connect training is, is the gold standard here in the state. Uh, we have some great connections to be able to bring those folks in. And as Sarah said, this would be a one-time. Uh, fee to enable us to train people at every building. Um, so that they can meet the um, group size requirements of NAMI. It runs between thirty and, and fifty people. Uh, they try to keep those numbers small. As I said, it is a very sensitive topic. If, I know many of you have gone through it. They talk very specifically about statistics, situations. Um, and they really give people an opportunity to ask very, very challenging questions. Uh, NAMI also recommends that you have two trainers because it is not uncommon um, for participants to become overwhelmed. Um, or need a, a private moment with someone who's trained uh, during those. So that is what we're trying to bring in to the district is to have an infrastructure to be able to provide. Um, in-person training for suicide prevention, which is what we're required to do uh, by RSA.
So the, I just, the twelve thousand dollars is a one day, two?
It's actually three days.
It's three days.
The first day they, they do the actual NAMI training and then the other two days, they train them how to do the training.
Train the trainer.
Train the trainer, yep. And we, we're estimating that we probably need, um, depending on the size of the building, um, you know, you would need. Two to four trainers per building. Um, and then we're also training a few district-wide people. Um, to be able to provide training to staff that maybe start um, later in the school year or they miss that or they just need. Um, or want to refresh our people like Sarah Prado, um, our social workers, um, maybe our HR director. Others that would provide that training.
Yes, Naomi.
That all sounds excellent and I appreciate you for doing it. Um, I want to. Illustrate, we've been talking a lot about unfunded mandates lately in our meetings. That there's an example of an unfunded mandate. We are required by law to provide this training and this is not money that. We're not getting any money from the state to do that. We're not getting any money from the federal government to do that.
Any other questions on that line? Okay, moving on to eighty-six, ten, ten. Um, the increase twelve thousand four twenty-seven.
Um.
One.
That includes just a general increase in the class, the cost of supplies for tier one. Um, but it also includes a um, three-year contract for second step. Second step is, I think, on the slate to be reviewed perhaps in two thousand twenty-seven. So that's a one-time cost that will get us through to two thousand twenty-seven. We don't anticipate that twelve thousand being in there next year.
And second step, we use K to six. We have some digital components as well as replacing kits. We use actual physical kits. In grades K through five.
Moving on to pages three and four, just kind of all those grouped together, eighty-one, fourteen, ten, twenty and thirty. Any room for decreases with this line, seeing how so little has been utilized?
So those lines are used to support paraprofessionals or to fund paraprofessionals, support students in different kinds of. After-school, school-sponsored.
The co-curriculars?
The co-curriculars.
Yeah, we put that in probably around seven years ago because uh. There was a, actually, there was a, there was a change in the law. Stating that all kids need access to co-curricular activities. And so we put that in there to give them powers to help them. One of the, the instances I can, I, I know of personally is um. When John was the special ed director, they found a nice co-curricular activity for this kid who actually. Just loved it and flourished, which was being on the bowling team. But the kid needed the assistance of a para after hours on the bowling team with him to help him.
Yes.
And it was a fantastic thing, you know, so we have that money. Sometimes we use it, sometimes we don't. But if we don't have the money, guess what? We're going to spend it anyway. And I've been associated and I've heard of districts that do not brought budget properly for special ed. And what they wind up doing is freezing regular ed and having special ed. Exist on the back of regular ed and that is just not right. So that's why we put these things in there because we have to by law. And if we don't have the money, we have to spend it anyway. We can't say, oh, I'm sorry, that's not funded. That doesn't fly.
And towards your point, even in the year and six months I've been here, I've seen the requests for students to receive the support. Increase. I think I've had seven requests this year, some run for the entire year. Simply because due to COVID, we had a decrease in our after-school program. So we have students that access these if they're in out of district placements. We have them access in our public schools and that access as part of their FAP is very important.
So um, let me just ask a specific question. I, I agree with everything that you're saying and I understand our legal responsibility, but let's talk about trends. Twenty twenty-three for para educator co-curriculars elementary, we spent one thousand nine hundred and forty-four dollars. We budgeted for this year ten thousand, now we're budgeting thirteen, uh, thirteen thousand two hundred and seventy-one dollars more. So what's the trend driving that doubling of the increase?
We are starting to see more kids access co-curricular after-school opportunities.
I think a lot of it has started when we start, when we brought forward the lines for the um. Elementary schools and the upper elementary schools for, to. Enhance co-curricular activities, experiences for kids. You saw that when the elementary school principals are there. Now these kids are getting older and they're expecting the same thing because that's been a few years now. So word has got around that that service is available, whereas I think a lot of parents didn't think that was a possibility.
And that also includes inclusion on field trips that might be a grade level field trip. That's an overnight, like that includes those pieces. Which I think for some people hasn't been a, a possibility, but knowing and understanding that that is the law and also part of FAP is why it's there.
And it sometimes means getting a specialized bus.
Correct.
Yes, that's correct.
And the specialized bus also means we have to find a way to include other kids. So it's inclusion all around the, even the experience.
Yes. Lori?
So I, I just have two questions going back here. So um, I think it would be helpful for the board if we knew. Like how much we, you know, to this point, how much we've actually spent this year, how many kids have. You know, had the opportunity to have these services. Um, because I do agree with Lori, like we've, we've gone from nineteen hundred forty-four to ten thousand now to twenty-three. And um, I do agree that um, you know, kids that do need co-curricular activity support should get it. Are these. Paras contracted or are they, do we offer our paras extra time to do those jobs?
We offer them to our paras. They, we always defer first to our paraprofessionals unless there was a reason that a contracted service provider would be more. Highly trained and appropriate with that student. Thus far, we have always had our own staff or a pair that worked with a student previously. Be able to come back, receive any updated training and go.
So yeah, so if we could have like, what activities there, you know, the number of kids who are getting these services, the number. Of activities that they're involved in and the number of paras who are actually doing this work.
Yeah, cur- currently right now, I just happen to, I don't know why, but I just happen to have some numbers here. Co-curricular activities for paras is over expended by twelve thousand dollars right now. It's, I can't tell, it's a ten account, so it's an elementary district wide. So I can't tag it to a particular school, school. Middle school is under expended by seventeen thousand, high schools are under expended by twenty-five. But then again, you know.
We have field trips. Yes, we have field trips coming up. We have sports, we have.
Spring.
Um, and I'm happy to put something together in a way that protects the identity of the students because I also don't want. Anyone to see a student and think, oh, there's a cost associated with their access to FAP. So I can write something up for that.
But I just want to point out too that you said that this is something that, you know, it, they added. We both, we all reacted when you said, you know, it, it's something that they added to the requirement, as it should be. These students should be able to, to this. But another example of an unfunded mandate, right? You, you are going to do this and we're not giving you money to do this, but you do have to do this. And we should do this. Like you said, we, like you always say, we have a moral and a legal obligation and a hundred percent we want that for students. But it's a cost that, it comes with a cost.
Yes.
This was probably added around seven years ago. Cause I, I remember we, that's when we first ported this thing in, in, in the school budget and Dave St. Jean was the sped director back then, so. It's been sitting, sometimes it's used, sometimes it isn't, but it takes some time for people to build awareness that that's. to build awareness that that service is indeed there.
Correct.
Right.
And it takes awareness for also people to learn how to provide appropriate inclusion in these activities. So towards your point, yes, it's morally right, it's ethically right, but there is definitely a cost associated with it.
May I just say, Sarah and Amy and I had a very good, very productive meeting with two parents last week about inclusion of students in after-school activities, but also field trips. And a result of that is that, you know, you passed a field trip policy a while back. We're gonna kind of retool a form, a field trip form, where we're going to include a section specifically for the staff to understand and investigate, is the facility at which students are going for the field trip, is it accessible to all students? What type of transportation do we need, what type of monitoring? Just change the paradigm, shift the paradigm of thinking a little bit more in terms of, what do we need to do to make sure every single child has an opportunity to experience the same thing?
So I'm gonna go back to what I put in the questions, I wasn't here last week, but this is, again, why I think it's important for us to explore an initiative with community on our co-curriculars, because if we could lower the expense of our co-curriculars, then it's easier to keep expanding those curriculars to expand the students' access, and if we need more paras, I'm talking about really shifting funds. So if we could, you know, really take on that initiative to lower our co-curricular expense while expanding the program with a community partnership with members in our community, then we're not only expanding opportunities, but we're also refunding these lines in, in a, in a better way. Lori.
I'm just trying to understand, again, going back to the paras.
So do our paras work forty hours a week, or do they work thirty-two hours a week?
Thirty-seven and a quarter.
And if they are doing this, is it overtime for them? Like, because it would have to be, like, at forty hours, they would have to get overtime, right? So we're actually paying them, is that correct?
Yeah, they work seven, thirty-seven and a quarter, and I believe anything over forty is overtime. Right.
And note that as we do this, this, when this happens and the request is made for a staff member to go and support a student, that's something that I discuss with the HR director to make sure, has this person had multiple requests? Are we going, are we actually creating a situation where, towards your point, it's a one-off, right? We're doing this every other week, or it's a dance, or it's something like that versus it's every day? And if that's the case, then we have other considerations. But we do take that into consideration, also into consideration, what's the most appropriate staff member to support the student?
Any other questions on that, those lines? All right. Page five. This is, go ahead.
I'm sorry, because I didn't finish reading this over until, like, four o'clock this afternoon. I have one more question on page four, if you don't mind, and if you don't have numbers at your fingertips and you need to get back to us, that's totally fine, because I understand I was very late. There were all the para educator lines on page four and page five, so I was just curious where we're at with how many we're looking at for next year, how many unfilled positions do we have right now, what's just sort of the general forecast in terms of those staffing levels?
I'm gonna let Matt do the numbers, because the number thing is his.
Well, we, you know, I, I have seventeen, that we're understaffed by seventeen.
That's what I have, too.
Yeah, okay, so we met, we match up with that.
Yes, and we have filled some with contracted service providers.
Yeah.
Because we have needed to go, okay, this student for their FAP needs a, a one-to-one paraprofessional. They weren't known to us, they perhaps moved in, or they were, we have seen since COVID, a remarkable number of students that are very complex learners coming back from homeschool, when suddenly they appear, and we have some real complex needs in front of us. So that's when we actually end up returning. We always advertise, we always look to fill with positions, however, as I know, we've said many times, it's very hard to find.
Yeah, and the way it works is, those are union positions, right? So even though we have hired contracted people to fill those positions, I cannot remove those union FTEs from the operating budget, because it looks like to them that I am supplanting their jobs in their contract, that's a union contract with NEA, with contracted services. Same thing with custodians, I have to leave those positions and the funding for them open. I can't take them away.
Repeat that, please, because I think everybody needs to hear that that's part of the budget.
That's part of the budget, is the labor contracts between the support staff and the Merrimack School District. I cannot take a contracted position and riff or get rid of a contracted employee covered under the collective bargaining agreement. I have to hold those positions in. If I get rid of those positions because we no longer have the need right now because we can't fill them, I cannot do that. It's in the contract specifically. I need to keep those positions open and available for employees when we get around to finding them so they can work for us as full employees with benefits and New Hampshire retirement.
Thank you. All right, page five, eight, fourteen, twenty-one, and thirty-one. This is more year-to-date, because just looking at twenty-three, twenty-four, what's budgeted this year and proposed, year-to-date expenditures and encumbered funds.
So Matt, these are salary lines?
Yeah, I mean, you know, we have both of those, both, each of those is around three hundred thousand dollars left, as far as what we've spent so far and what we've encumbered for the rest of the year. But that's because we're still missing people, and we're using that extra money to fund the contracted service providers.
Correct. So those don't appear as another line in the budget?
Correct.
Any other questions on those lines?
Lori, may I just say, just to point out once again to the public, the shortage of staff is not unique to Merrimack. This is a nationwide issue, and everybody is having a very, very difficult time filling positions.
Well, and I'll add to that, we're not unique in the complex learners, COVID fallout.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, just the, the family members that I have that are special education educators and administrators, you know, in different parts of the country are sharing the same story.
Yes. And it was not so atypical during the pandemic, when I would get a call as the director and someone making a referral for a child that has just suddenly appeared in their neighborhood, and they're like, we don't think this kid is going to school, this is where they live, we're making a special ed referral, right? Because anyone can make a special ed referral. And so because towards that point, they just, a lot of children were lost during that time.
Okay, page seven, eight, one, two, two, third, the, both those lines for, the question is, any room for decreases here, given previous year expenditures never exceeded sixty thousand?
So I'm gonna separate the lines, because they actually serve two different functions. The first line is the tutoring, and that is used to support any students who have a medical condition that causes them to be removed from school for, and it's a documented medical condition, for greater than ten consecutive days. And we do provide this in the Merrimack School District to all students, not just special education or 504, which is truly the right thing to do. And it typically goes in the form of either tutoring within the home through an agency, or it's students that are hospitalized for serious, complex medical issues, and those hospitals have, have agencies that we then contract with, and we pay them to complete the tutoring. The tutoring, to be clear, is only designed to have them be able to come back with minimal access, right? There doesn't solve the fact that a student's been out with some real, you know, a complex medical issue, a terminal issue, they're gonna have to need supports when they return, however, it simply just allows them to be able to come back and not be as far behind. And that's the statute that we, we manage there. It does tend to fall more at the high school this year, I'm seeing it more even going into the middle school and the upper elementary, and a lot of those are students who are in hospital placements for behavioral health and mental health concerns. The next one, though, is to speak to the point about what we plan for to have our own staff, that is our extended school year summer program, right? What we think it would cost to provide it at the high school. And so towards the point of, we have it in our budget as we would prefer, and we always would, it's always as much as we can, would like to have our own employees working our ESY programming. If we did, this is what we anticipate it would cost based upon the number of employees we need, stipends, things that, that we play out and we can figure out through our collective bargaining agreement. Typically, especially since COVID, it's very challenging to get staff to work in the summer. So we end up using a number of contracted service providers. I will say, last summer, we had a number of paras that had previously, that were contracted, that had previously just come to work ESY, and then went back to their different district. So it's there, because we then have to use that money to offset the cost that would otherwise appear in other contracted lines. Matt, did you want to add to that?
No, I'm fine.
Okay.
We're good.
Okay.
Any questions on that line? Moving to page ten.
Ten.
This is line twelve oh five, forty-one, eighty-three, twenty-three, oh six, just a calculation on or reasoning behind that increase.
So as we try to organize our contracted service, so this is the cost of the contracts for this year for our Boothby Speech OT, assistive technology, consult, consultant, orientation and mobility consultant, and teacher of the deaf. It is also, and our teacher of the visually impaired, that falls under there. Also in that line is our contract with Here to Learn. Here to Learn provides our educational audiologists for students that are hearing impaired. And also in here is DTS therapy. DTS therapy provides our PTs. So we were able to take the contract for this year, recognize that it's going to stay fairly consistent based upon what we can plan. Hopefully, we'll know, we know more at the end of every year, and then we adjust accordingly. And that's where that number came from.
May I just say that, just from doing budgets for a lot of years, along with Matt certainly, the contract service provider line for related services of occupational therapy, physical therapy, and speech therapy has been one of the most rapidly increasing lines because of the increase in incidence of students requiring these related services. So this is maybe a little bit of a surprise in terms of the increase, but it is certainly more reflective of the actual level of service that is required.
So I know a few years ago, we, we looked at this, and we looked at, if we paid, like, say, a speech and language, you know, we actually would have to come up with our own area, because any school district that's gonna start them at a teacher level or whatever, it's never gonna work. So it has to come in at a different pace, pay grade. But we actually, I think Matt did this for the board, it must have been like five years ago, you know, and I think we should do it again. Like, you know, if we hired full-time people here versus contracted services, what would it come out to? I know five years ago, it came out that we should hire contracted services. I just want to know if that's the same.
Yeah, we could take a look. I remember doing that specifically, because when you load in the cost of benefits and everything like that, yeah.
Again, I think that, you know, like, when you look at, like, a school psychologist, or you look at a speech and language person, they're, they're, it's very difficult to bring them into a school district, especially if they were working, you know, in a skilled nursing facility, you know, and then they're gonna go, and, but some people, it's attractive to some people, they want to have their vacations with their kids, they want to be in the school district for their kids, but, you know, what, what could we do? You know, would it be possible to come up with a different pay grade, work with our HR director, and just fish, you know, just to see if, if we could make it work?
I do know years ago, we did have around three school psychologists. They were making, on average, and this was probably a good ten years ago, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year. They were not on a union contract, they were not union positions, they were administrative positions, not on advise and confer. They basically were hired guns that came in, and they, we paid them New Hampshire retirement, we paid them full benefits, and by the time you got up around there, you were looking at well over two hundred thousand dollars apiece. And I wasn't privy to all the discussion revolving around them, but we did not find them at the time to be effective at that time. Things could change, could have changed.
And towards your point, where school districts find a struggle is, if we're going to shift, it needs to be more like a shift that takes a year, because what happens is the contracted service agencies say to us, typically, they start in February, and I kind of try to hold them off as much as possible with, we have to hire, we have to wait, but they say to us, you have to contract with us, and here is your drop dead date. And some agencies have been as early as, like, March fifteenth. This is your drop dead date, if you don't contract with us, we won't promise you anybody. So when we've done the shift, we've done it over the course of, like, a year, to give ourselves time to make sure we don't find ourselves without, and then paying an even more expensive contracted rate for a service that might be less reputable, that we don't particularly enjoy as much, and they don't provide the quality we're looking for.
So I would understand, from a business model perspective, wanting to get that, but on the other hand, since there are towns that don't vote till April, that seems pretty blackmailish to me. I'll just be honest, and not very altruistically minded, even though we're paying premium rates for those contracted services. Sorry, soapbox moment. Lori, you had something to say?
Yeah.
I, I don't think that'll happen, Ken. All right. Any other questions on that line? Okay, moving on to page twelve, line one hundred twenty-one, forty, forty-one, eight, three, three, one, dash, ten, what accounts for this increase, and then there's some follow-up questions to that.
Sure. That's the, that's the, when we put the school psychologists that were elementary school into that line, that's why you see the increase. So instead of having them spread out and buried in the Boothby contract, and because we had people coming in from different agencies, we just said, here's the agency, here's the elementary school cost. And there have been some questions about referrals. And so as of just today's date, preschool has had twenty-eight referrals, which is good, because it means our COVID intensity of referrals is starting to slow a little bit, so that's a good thing. MES has had fifteen referrals and seven triennials or additional assessments required by an IUP team. RFS has had sixteen referrals and twenty-six triennial assessments or additional information. JMU's has had five referrals and twenty-two triennials. So if you look right there, the trend is we have a lot more of those referrals at the elementary level, which is why we see our, the psychologists there a little bit more. MMS has had twelve referrals and thirteen triennials. The middle school has had three referrals and twenty-four triennials. We've had seven triennials and out-of-district placements. And here in Merrimack, the school psychologist does the majority of the evaluations, except for OT, PT, speech, those that need to be done by the, an FBA, done by the related service provider. And the reason, just if people are wondering why we have typically a school psychologist do it, is it makes sure we have a nice, high-quality, comprehensive eval that's not split between people. So if the school psychologist is going in, and they're looking, and they're doing a cognitive assessment, and they say, oh, this student has a very low working memory, when they go in and do the observation, they're able to see if that working memory appears in the classroom, and so they are able to tie that evaluation very nicely together.
So here's kind of where I'm trying, still trying to figure out why there's such a dramatic increase, because we, we've been in this boat for a number of years now, we're not having this massive increase. The districts around us, comparable districts around us that are doing contracted services, like London Dairy, the seventeen percent sped kids in their district have a budget of four hundred and four thousand for their entire district for their, their psych evaluation contracted services. Hudson has some in-house and out-house, but all, altogether comes to five hundred and seventy thousand district-wide. So I'm kind of trying to figure out why we are this anomaly of this year, because I talked to Matt about year-to-date and what's happening this year, why this year we're, we're going to end up three hundred in the hole from what was budgeted, and then budgeting for six hundred for next year, where comparable districts with same numbers of students and percentage of students is so much lower.
So I can't speak to any of the other districts. What I can speak to is this, there is still, and we are catching up with, the students who were not given triennial evaluations or not given full evaluations during COVID. So there were a bunch, so there still are a bunch of assessments that need to be completed, which adds to the amount of time we need a school, a school psychologist present in our building. which adds to the amount of time we need a school psychologist present in our building. In addition to that, what we had done last year was we had staffed it out with multiple agencies, with Boothby, and then what we discovered was many of these agencies have contingencies in their contracts. So some staff were coming in, but they could decide to work remotely if they chose. They could decide to say, oh, today is a, not an in-person day, a remote day. And then we had some issues with our evaluations and the quality of the evaluations that came forth. So we had to switch agencies. We did already have White Birch providing a certain amount of school psychologist service. So we looked at the number of assessments that were done that we were aware of last year, and we figured out based upon that, based upon the number of students, the number of anticipated triennials, referrals, are we going to need someone full-time or not? Now, we budget this because this is what we think we're going to need. Every quarter with Boothby, I sit with them and they say, you've used X percent of your contract. You've used X percent of your contract. And then I'll be doing that just in a, like, probably an ever, like trimester basis with White Birch. You've used X percent. They haven't billed this many hours. Let's be mindful so we don't end up paying for those.
So you answered one of the questions I wondered, but that during those COVID years, we got behind on the triennials and some were not fully evaluated. Do you anticipate that once we get a lot of that sorted out, we're going to need less hours?
I do. And as long as the referrals continue to start to normalize, it is the, and what unfortunately has happened is because the kids that come out are, as you know, much more complex, you're teasing out what is related to COVID, what is related to an educational disability. So what might have been a much more simpler evaluation plan, still meeting the criteria in I D E A, has become more complex because now we have to do more additional assessments to help tease that out. So my hope is that, yes, that will start to stabilize, will have addressed all those issues, and we would see also the number of referrals, especially as we add and change our regular education programs, they should decrease.
So I'm going to add to Matt's to-do list, along with the para, or I mean, sorry, the OT, S L D, PT look at, I'd like to look at what it would be to start hiring in-house again. So Nashua has 13 psychologist, clinical psycho, or sorry, school psychologists on staff. They range in salary, this doesn't include benefits, obviously, but they range a salary from $45,000 to, they have two that are at the $90,000 mark. So they do all of what we're contracting services for. So maybe it's time we do a study on looking towards hiring in-house again.
And I don't know if Nashua has changed since I was there, but one of the benefits towards your point was that their school psychs, although they were assigned to a building, were district-wide. And so you had someone who oversaw them, and then as they were district-wide, what made the difference was I was able to go, oh, this school suddenly has a flood of referrals, let's go over here, which now we've had to do with contracted service providers, which is also why we're staying to the same agency, because we can say, can you please reassign your staff over here? So, and that was a really nice way that Nashua did that for us.
And I echo what Lori said because I work in our building with a school psychologist that is present in the building and does all our testing. And the, you can't put a cost on the fact that that school psychologist gets to know the students in the building and the teachers and can really sit in a, in a meeting and really speak to what they think, you know, is going on with the student. And it, it's something that is lost with contract services.
Well, and you also have that, that they're invested in the district as employees. They know the people.
The other question I might have, and I'm sure that Sarah can find this out, is in those other districts that you referenced, does the school psychologist do the academic evaluations or not? Because I know here they, they do, and that would increase their costs. I, I think in London Dairy, they have a little bit different structure. They have these directors at every building. And if our school psychs are doing the academics, whereas in the other districts that a certified examiner is doing it, that would decrease the cost. So I would just be curious what they're doing in their structure.
Oh, which gives me another question. What is the law in New Hampshire about a certified examiner overseeing a special education teacher to do an academic assessment?
So you have to go under table 1100. So, and I can send this, I'm sure you have it, but I'm happy to send it to you.
Please send it to me.
Okay, let me make a note to send you 1100. So if you look at table 1100 in the administrative rules for the education of students with disabilities, it talks about what a qualified examiner is. But then it has a line on the bottom that becomes very important, and it says that the person who is the qualified examiner must be the one to interpret and write up the results. And so for a Wyatt, a certified special educator can give a Wyatt, absolutely. But if it's a WISK, they can't. And here's where districts get in trouble, is they go, well, it's okay, I had someone else who wasn't, who was certified, review that, and that does not meet the criteria of a qualified examiner. And that becomes challenging when we deal with like outside companies that do neuropsychs because medically, it might, like at Boston Children's, it absolutely does. Under the table 1100 and those administrative rules, it does not. But I'm happy to send that to you.
Yeah, the reason I ask is my daughter is equivalent to what we'd have as a building special education coordinator, and their vice principal is the qualified examiner at their school, which is very interesting. She handles all their special education stuff as part of her vice principal positions. They have, they have three vice principals at their school. But so Ashley can, under her supervision, under Virginia, Virginia law, do those assessments. So that's why I was asking.
Yeah. But we can probably crosswalk it real quick in the Virginia administrative rules, and it would take like a three-minute, just like Google Chat, to crosswalk it and see how it goes because now I'm interested.
Any other questions on that line item? All right. And then there were just some general questions. Yes, some of them have been answered, but we'd like to highlight some of the decreases in the budget.
Yes. So you will see actually that as some of the contracted service line decreased as we shifted the, the school psychologist contracted service, which is great because it also is showing, I think, that this is a cost and we're not kind of double dipping, right? There's not padding, oh, we kept it in here just to put it in another place. We also have noted that, Matt and I had a long conversation, and we think that we get able to reduce our cost of additional equipment for next year. That was a pretty nice decrease. The I D E A grant is designed to support our programming, and part of that is specialized staff training. So we're moving, there was, I think, maybe a $20,000 to $30,000 decrease there. We're going to move that into the I D E A grant because that's not a supplant, that's a support. And then we had a lot of little decreases where we were able to shave like, oh, $1,000 off here, $2,000 off there, because we recognize either there was a decrease in what the cost is going to be. We also, I do just want to say so everyone is aware, in our out-of-district line, we understand that as we, students move, the money moves, right? And we also understand that there are a couple newer factors that affect our out-of-district line. One of them is the placements in what we would consider special education therapeutic schools through behavioral health. And so the districts are now forced to pay a percent of that. And so what districts had been doing originally, because no one really knew what to do when this started to happen, was to do the full cost. So for example, a student with services that might be placed at Spalding Youth Center might have a cost of $150,000. This is absolutely no student in our school district. I am using this based on cost analysis from years of working with this program. And the school district would pay for that because it would exceed, and we would recognize we would be able to apply under special education aid, what used to be catastrophic aid, because there was a time when it was being mostly funded. That, as we all know, this year is not the case. So what we have done is shifted and said, okay, we finally have guidance from the Department of Education how to pay for these. We do have to pay the court placement cost, the 402 cost, which is a formula, and every year it runs about like between $53,000 and $57,000, and then they always disallow some costs. So we typically budget at about $66,000. And then the state pays the rest. So we don't pay for that. And so, yes, it's significantly more work at our end. However, we don't find ourselves short on money that we didn't need to spend when sped aid may or may not be funded again. So the benefit to that with this is as we've had students that move in, as we've had students who need a different, least restrictive environment, because we've exhausted our resources, as we have students who have been placed, whether through juvenile justice, the court, you know, D C Y F, or behavioral health and these other treatment facilities, we've been able to absorb some of that cost by not putting all that money forth upfront and letting the state do it. But it has been a significant amount of work, and I don't think the placements are happy. And yet, we have a responsibility to provide a FAP and spend taxpayer money appropriately.
With that being said, could you explain for the community why we have out-of-district placements and what is entailed with making that decision by the I E P team?
By the I E P team, sure. So we do have students whose learning is, needs are so complex that we can't control the regular education environment enough to, and that means our public school, right? Because all children are regular education children first. We can't modify it enough, we can't control it enough to allow them to access their free and appropriate public education. Again, that ability to make appropriate progress. So typically, when we have really complex learners, they tend to have severe social emotional needs where they really require a much smaller setting, a setting where they can go in and out of classes, right? Because we try not to remove kids more than 3%. And then they also could have really intensive therapeutic responses that public schools just can't have. And it also has for that student the benefit of not ostracizing them from their peers in a way in which they seem so separate and different. We also, many school districts have kids that have medical needs that are such that even with a one-to-one nurse, and in my experience, we have staff students with one-to-one nurses, we are not able to provide them with the medical supports that they need to be there to access learning. Because their medical needs are so complex, they need to have someone with them, a doctor, these other pieces. So really, the I E P team has to exhaust all the services that we can bring into a school to make the school accessible to a child. And once truly we're seeing that that child is not making any progress, right? Then we go, okay, we have to look at an alternative learning environment. But we take that very seriously because our goal with an alternative learning environment is to say, how can you get the supports and services you need here so you can reintegrate into your home community? And we really, it is a decision that's taken with great care because all children deserve the right to access their local public school. Would that help?
Any other questions from the board? Oh, this was just one last question. The percentage of students, you don't have to give the whole school, maybe each school, but maybe the overall that are in the general education class less than 40% of the time.
Yes, I kind of wondered about that particular question. So we in Merrimack-
It just shows level of need, that's why.
Okay. So here's the thing, I tried to do that, and yet I was not able to come up with a way to do it that did not illustrate and perhaps reveal who students were. I will say that we work and we believe very strongly, and Amy and I are working with this to really say, all kids are regular kids first, even if they have significant and extensive needs. And that our I E P needs to capture the needs, so we're very clear about what's in it, and we expect that all kids can access to the amount possible. I just couldn't find a way to do it that didn't identify kids. But that was a great question.
Again, came from my daughter.
She wants to call me. That could be a different conversation.
You know, if I could find a way to get her here, she, she's, just let me brag for a minute, she's a firecracker. She graduated four years ago. She's getting her master's degree now, and they've already hired her as the coordinator of her building.
Good for her.
And, yeah, she would be an asset to any district. But yes, if I could get her from Virginia to New Hampshire, I'd do it in a heartbeat.
For multiple reasons.
For multiple reasons, yes. Two grandkids being a lot of that, so. All right. Thank you so much for your time. Are there any other questions for Sarah before we let her go? We thank you for your hard work. We thank you for your passion for helping kids.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. You know, one of the most difficult jobs in an entire school district, tremendous wear and tear on special education student service directors. So, thank you, Sarah.
With that, we will move on to district-wide. Who's, who's taking that one on?
I'll, I'll, I'll start off with the really, really exciting portion of the, the budget, probably the most that you'll ever see here. The district budget is made up of contracted services, it's made up of benefits, it's made up of obligations that we have to pay for by law, and there are a few other items that Amy has in there from a curriculum standpoint that she can go over at a, a later point after I'm just kind of done giving a brief overview of what it is. You know, we have the retirement incentive. We're obligated per the teacher contact to provide an early retirement incentive for at least seven M T A members. That amount of money is, is in the district budget. We have the big one. This is the big one, the health insurance. As you know, it went up 10% on the point of service, around 14.9% on the site of service. That equated to like a $1.2 million increase. And I calculated that based upon the number of people where they sit right now and them not moving next year, plus the number of buyouts that we have that gave us that entire number. So it's a good number based upon the people we have here and looking at any potential vacancies that may take the insurance when we do finally hire folk. That has to be incorporated, and that was estimated as like a two-person plan. So that's how that number was arrived at. The dental insurance, it went up a modest 5, 5.8%, it's around $46,000. We have long-term disability insurance. We have for support staff and for M T A, for teachers. That's through Primex. All our insurances are through Primex. And a couple of years ago, the board signed a, a long-term agreement with them, putting a five to 10% cap on all those rates. I wish we could have that with health insurance, but that hasn't been offered in around 25 years. So there is a cap on that, and it is with Primex. We have FICA, which is just a percentage of the total number of salaries. We've kind of left the FICA, the New Hampshire retirement for the professional staff and for the teaching staff, a level funded. We think we can cover it without an increase, even though there are an increase in the, the wage lines of those areas. We think we're, we're all set leaving it as it is. We have other benefits that are in the teacher contract and the support staff contract. We have support staff improvement. For advise and confer, we have administrative improvement. For the teachers, we have $50,000 in program professional staff improvement, professional development improvement, workshops for undergraduate, graduate studies, district initiatives, $150,000. These are all in the labor contracts that we have, as is the amount that we're paying for health insurance, as is providing the Hampshire retirement system. Everything is in there. You know, obviously, as an employer, we're bound to have to provide unemployment compensation insurance, workers' comp. Because we transport kids, we have to provide transportation. We signed a long-term deal with S T A, who's been a phenomenal organization to work with over the years. It's a 5% increase. We did that a while back. It's got another year or so to run on it. But there's no fuel escalation clause. So when gas was at four something dollars or diesel, four plus something dollars of diesel, there was no escalation clause. However, if it does dip down low, they give us a rebate. So it's kind of like we get the best of both worlds. We don't have to worry about it on the upside, but if the gap, price of diesel goes down to like $2 a gallon, or let's call it a dollar a gallon, and just make us feel good, right? Then we get the benefit of that. They don't, they don't keep it all. We have our insurance from property and liability in there. That's around $200,000 a year, and quite frankly, that's, that's not a bad deal for the 600,000 square feet of buildings that we have and all the grounds we have and everything like that. You know, that, that is a pretty good deal. That includes any kind of slips, trips, falls, anything like that that would happen by a third party on our, on our facilities. We have, let's see, obviously, we have criminal background checks that we have to do for all our employees and all our volunteers. That's an ongoing cost. We have our, our audit, which is like the highlight of my entire life towards the end of the summer. towards the end of the summer, when I'm visited by around 10 CPAs that look younger and younger every single year. And so that's around a $37,000 ticket. We do partner with the town of Merrimack. We've been doing this for a number of years. We have the same auditing firm. And we also have to take care of a couple of GASB's, General Accounting Standards Boards, GASB 45 and GASB 75. It's for post-employment benefits. What they do is they do, we hire an actuary together, us and the town, and we split the cost. Saves us money and it gets us a good product. And we have to figure out the post-employment benefits that we are liable for when people leave, which we don't pay health insurance when people leave. So it's just mystifies me why we have to do this, but we have to do it. And then they look at it, if it were to happen, the runout of all those years of the retirees, and it's really an involved thing. But it's something we have to do for the audit. And so we do a total refresh of it every around two years. And then for one year, we do like a rollover. This year, we're in a total, total refresh. We have school district legal services in here. We increased that by around $20,000. We had a year that was challenging in '23, '24. I think we continue to have a challenging year this year. And so that increase was was definitely needed. School board advertising, supplies, memberships, contracted services, superintendent's office. That's to pay for school messenger. If you like to hear either Bill or me at 5:00 on the morning calling no school, that's how that's done. So we pay for that. We pay for Power School. We pay for a number of automated systems that we have in place in the district. We also pay for a percentage of the the internet that's coming into the schools. So essentially, with that and just your normal postage, printing, telephone, that is essentially the the district budget. The big tickets are the health insurance, the New Hampshire retirement insurance, and the dental insurance. Where fortunate is in in that the the increase for the New Hampshire retirement was was virtually nothing this year, and it's hold stagnant for two for two years. We're probably at around 19% for teachers and support staff, maybe 20, 22%. But when you look at that as compared to the town of Merrimack, if you're a police officer and you hire police officers, you're up around 30% of what their salary is that you have to pay into the New Hampshire retirement system. I know there has been talk of, let's get out of the retirement system and provide everybody with a 401K. I hear that that's being kind of talked about this year a little bit. It was talked about five years ago. It was talked about five years before that. And every so often, it kind of rears its head as a good idea. What you have to do is because over the decades that we have been in the New Hampshire retirement system, probably a good 30-some-odd years, we have people that are still collecting retirement, who have retired. So in order to get out, you have to fund and pay your future potential liabilities as as done by an actuary. And you have to fill in what you'll have in the past. So it's a million-dollar ticket in order to move out of that. And plus, the retirement system is one of the major benefactors for those people going into public service, like your police and your fire. If you're a cop and you're 55 years old, you can retire with a decent pension, and that costs the town money. But those people really work very hard, and you want them to have that benefit. Same thing with our our teachers and our support staff. So this is something that every once in a while, it comes across. But there is, and it's not as easy as flipping a switch. It's millions upon millions and millions of dollars that you have to pay the New Hampshire retirement system to totally divest yourself of the 30 to 35 years of contributions to that system that people have been making and people will collect depending upon their projected, I hate to sound morbid, age of death. You know, that's what actuaries do. You know, they look at people, they look at you, you're going to, well, Amy's going to live a lot longer than that, forever. She's going to live forever. So she's going to cost us a lot. Matt, on the other hand, he's going to go next week, so he's cheap, right? But that's what they do. So that's what we have in the district budget. I don't know if you want to add any of your items that you were looking at or not? It's up to you?
I mean, no, I just have a few additions that you saw. One is to add AmesWeb Plus to our district-wide assessment line. That is, I know that Sarah's already gone, but Sarah and I have worked closely to develop a system to ensure that we're progress monitoring the kids that are in Title I reading intervention and special ed. You're also seeing a request that really just accurately reflects the expenditures in a line. Over the last three years since I've been here, we've turned over a lot of staff. And that line is directly related to the number of new staff that we onboard. So just last year, we had 66, 38 new hires and 28 transfers. So these would be people that were in a different role. Maybe they were a support staff moving into a classroom teacher position, or they were in a different position and transferred buildings or departments. And we know the efficacy and the importance of mentoring, so we give them a mentor during that time. And that amount, just consistently, we're running about $5,000 over. So this is really just an attempt to make that line what we actually are spending. And then the last line is a request to be able to procure some curriculum development supplies. Historically, as far as I could go back, this line has always had $800 in it. And that goes usually in July, honestly. We we spend it pretty early on. And we're in this unique situation where we have a couple of needs coming our way. I'm looking to purchase some kind of health curriculum for K-6. Right now, we are covering that in a different sort of way. The PE teachers teach some. We do some through the school counseling office. The health teachers do something. So we're really looking to have some kind of resource for teachers to use. And so we're hoping to do some piloting this year and to be able to purchase something for use next year. And we also have this pending change to the New Hampshire minimum standards. And we know that there will be requirements in personal finance, but there are other things coming our way. I I know when Principal Claire comes, we'll talk about purchasing a new civics textbook that would meet the requirement for the year-long course that we believe will become part of the minimum standards. That the minimum standards have one more hurdle. They have to get to through the state board. But, you know, they have been advocating for a lot of these changes. So happy to take any questions you might have about the curriculum stuff. Not about healthcare.
I think you know what I'm going to say. Yeah, another unfunded mandate.
Oh, yeah. The other thing that I I wanted to point out is that when you look at our mentoring budget, and and I'm not asking for any additional funds, we have used every single dollar of the amount already. It's been set up. But we are required by the DOE to have a mentor for anyone that's on a site-based learning plan. But they expect people to do that for free. And people don't want to do that for free. It's it's actually a lot of work to mentor someone who did not go to school to be a teacher. You really are teaching them the very basics of planning preparation, how to assess. And so they require it for for at least three years. Well, as long as it takes you to complete your plan, but up to three years.
And with the personal finance and the changes to the other graduation requirements, it could it could, I'm not saying it does specifically now, but when it comes through, it will cost curriculum. It could cost, you know, making sure we have the people who are certified to teach that exactly, you know, it, professional development, all of those things. So again, an unfunded mandate. We are required to do it. They aren't giving us money to do it.
Yeah, and and Bill and I have talked a lot about the unfunded mandates related to curriculum. There's been a lot of conversation about civics dating back about 10 years. It just seems like there's someone there that really every so often just says, well, and I think you should also teach this. Now you have to teach genocide and the Holocaust and civics and more civics. It's 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 strange, they're focused really on civics. We also, a couple of years ago, had a really important law passed about screening students for dyslexia. And so the state requires that you use a normed reference screener. We use iReady here in in Merrimack. And there are others that you can choose from, whether it's Acadia's or AmesWeb or Star. There are others, but again, they require that you use a screener, but they don't actually tell you which screener to use or give you the screener. So it's up to us to fund those requirements. And and you you have to have it. It's it's not optional.
I will tell you one good thing about being in New Hampshire. In Texas, they tell you what screener, what curriculum, what textbook. You cannot deviate, you cannot add to it. You have to teach the curriculum exactly the way it comes. And teachers' hands are very tied, district hands are very tied. There's not the local rule kind of mindset. And so on the one hand, we have unfunded mandates, which is no fun. But at least in New Hampshire, we have some freedom in the things we get to choose. And and I do appreciate that. Any other questions for Amy or Bill? Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your excellent questions.
All right, we will move on to public comments on agenda items only. If you would like to come speak, feel free to come to the microphone and state your name and address. If you're a student, you never have to state your address. I I'm getting thumbs up from the two people left in our audience tonight, that they're good. All right, well, with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn, and then I have a couple of announcements to make.
I'd be happy to make that motion.
Motion made by Jenna, seconded by Ken. All those in favor, say aye. We'll assume that that-
Lori's with us.
Lori's with us on adjourning. There we go, 500. She's going to go home and take care of herself. We, and go ahead and submit your questions for Monday night. And I will get those out this weekend for our people. Thank you and good night.